A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia City Council Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings regarding the establishment of a comprehensive strategy for reducing and eliminating youth gun violence.
Will the clerk please read the first witness?
Panel one, Antoine Postel, Kia Sutton, Nahia Ray, Jared Bradley, and Marquise Graham. Please come forward to the witness table.
Please state your name for the record and begin your testimony, but before you start, I want to thank all of you for taking time out of your schedule, especially on a Friday, to come and talk about ideas, solutions, as to how we address the issue of youth gun violence. About a month ago, my colleagues and I hosted a hearing particularly on this issue of youth gun violence, and primarily during that hearing, only adults had the opportunity to speak, and only adults talked about what they thought we should be doing as a city to address the issue of youth gun violence. But we did have about two young people that came up and spoke, and they said, "Well, if adults are going to talk about youth gun violence, like, where are the voices of our young people? Because we're the ones experiencing this gun violence, and how come we're not at the table?" So, we took time out this Friday, especially, we took time out this Friday particularly to provide you a voice and an opportunity to talk about how we can work on this issue of youth gun violence, but we wanted to directly hear it from you. So, we thank all of you for taking time out of your Friday afternoon and making the choice to be a voice for young people. So, we can go ahead and begin?
My name is Kia Sutton.
And my name is Marquise Graham.
Okay, Kia, you want to start?
Okay, uh, are you asking me a question?
So, give us your perspective on what do you think that we can be doing as a city to address the issue of youth gun violence? Issues, concerns, because the information that we're going to be taking from this actual hearing is looking at how do we improve the resources that the city provides to specifically address the issue of youth gun violence?
Okay, um, I think some things that contribute to gun violence is social inequalities such as like bullying, and people tend to solve their disagreements with gun violence nowadays. So, I think a lot of things that can prevent or help, yeah, prevent gun violence are like those little safe havens of like, like the recreation centers and like things that people can do or kids can do after school that would not require them to just hang around on the streets or things like that. Like, I used to go to a dance school on like 63rd Street, but they closed that recreation center down, so that's no longer there. So, I just think that a lot of people can, can really benefit from those programs.
Okay.
Again, my name is Marquise Graham, and I will answer that by saying, well, first, I was part of gun violence. I was in the streets. I'm 20 years old now. I was part of that when I was about 15, 16, but part of it was because, what she was saying, recreation centers are closing down, pop centers are closing down, and again, the youth don't ever get the chance to speak is always what the adults want us to do, and all these Stop the Violence marches, but they not interacting with the kids. They, they tell us to go to school, they tell us to do things that we want to do, but how, how will we do that if we don't see that? We, we come outside, and we see, you know, older people on the streets making money, and that's our vision because that's what we seeing. We not seeing people coming, uh, feed homeless people. We not seeing, uh, people going to college trips or any things like that. So, I say we need to open up more recreation centers, interact with the kids, uh, you know, just by doing like cookouts or, you know, just taking them on like college trips or, you know, NBA games, like Big Brother, Little Brother, Big Sister, Little Sister programs.
Okay.
How you doing? My name is Antoine Postel. Actually didn't hear the question.
So, from your perspective, give us how you think that we as a city can, can address the issue of youth gun violence, as well as what do you think are the issues, concerns? In this hearing, we were, we are taking testimony to, uh, address the issue of youth gun violence here in the city of Philadelphia.
Well, um, right now, um, like the way the city is set up now, like, I'm currently 25 years old. I'm not really that old, but when I was growing up, it was a lot of things to do, like, it was basketball leagues, it was football leagues, it was programs, it was drama clubs, it was all types of things for the youth to do, to keep us busy. When you have a lot of time on your hands, you just flock to, to whatever is, whatever that you see, whatever is, is around you. And now, with all of, uh, as they both spoke on, with the closing of these rec centers, there isn't anything to do for these kids. So, what they see is the drugs and the gun violence. So, that's what they adapt, so they adapt to their environment. So, what we need to do as a city, well, what I do personally in my neighborhood, and I've been running a basketball league for like five years now, um, I've been taking a lot of kids all over the city, but I'm one man, and I understand, just me being me, I see how that affects my neighborhood. But just imagine if us as a city, with the people, uh, in, in, in position of power, if they all came together and, and shared the same vision, or at least put the same effort in, just imagine what we could do for these kids. Um, you got these high school kids, they don't have jobs, um, so they resort to selling drugs, because a lot of them are coming from broken homes, these parents, uh, a lot of single parents out here, single mothers, um, because majority, a vast majority, especially in the African-American culture, or in the urban community, shall I say, a majority are more in prison or in jail, I mean, or in jail or dead. So, it's a lot of broken homes, so these kids, um, they selling drugs because they don't have any jobs. And with coming, with selling drugs also brings gun violence as well. So, the main thing is we just got to give these kids something to do, to occupy their time that's positive. If not, they'll just become a product of their environment.
Anybody else want to elaborate? I'm, I'm gonna push you a little further, right? And, and my area, one part of the area that I represent in South Philadelphia, we have, I think it's two football leagues. You have the Sigma Sharks, we have the Hurricanes, and it's the Point Breeze Youth Development Basketball League, and then we also have, there's another basketball league at Vera Rec Center. How do you go about making sure that when there are programs that are out there for young people to actually take advantage of them, to get involved in during the summertime? Can y'all give me some feedback on that? Or are you saying also in certain areas, there's just like nothing to do at all?
Nothing to do at all.
Gotcha.
But, um, for one, and I, and I know this firsthand, for one, the youth want, um, to know that people really care. Like, if you show these kids that you care about them, with no hidden agendas or anything like that, like, then they're going to be receptive to the things that you're saying. But if not, if it's just for, um, uh, like, we just had a Stop the Violence rally in my neighborhood recently, um, with, uh, sweet Sune, um, Sister Talia, she came out and helped put it together. Um, a bunch of politicians came out, a lot of politicians who was running. I never seen these people a day of my life. They want to come out, take pictures, but it was for, for the pop, for the, for the press, exactly. Um, "Oh, I'm running, vote for me, vote for me." But like, what are you really doing in this neighborhood that's helping make a difference? Like, we don't see, these, these kids don't see you out here interacting with them, they don't see you out here while they're hungry, help, help feeding them, or just helping anything. Like, in my neighborhood, our rec center is open, but it hasn't been a program, any programs in our neighborhood for like the last 10 years, aside from the programs that, that I provide. But other than that, like, it's, there is no one that, that shows that they care, and why, why am I going to listen to you if you don't care about me? That makes no sense.
Okay. What part of the city do you live in, if you don't mind me asking?
West Philly.
Where about in West Philly?
West, West Mill Creek area. Uh, The Pit, um, it's a basketball court called The Pit, like, just like-
Forty-sixth Street?
Forty-ninth Street.
Oh, Forty-ninth, near Hoop Street?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and, and it was crazy.
I know about Hoop Street.
Just the, the face that you made, right? Um, that's like the perception, um, of our neighborhood for the entire city from-
No, I said this only for the simple fact that, no, I know, you know, I still want June Street, so-
Okay.
Long, long time ago. So, I know about, um, James Road, Martha Washington, used to go to Sister Claire Muhammad as a kid, know about June Street, Forty-sixth Street, and, um, Hoop Street is right next to, um, James Road. So, uh, so, so the face is more so because I know the area, and, um, well, I always stayed on the other side, though, um, close to, um, Forty-sixth and Brown. Close to the mic. Sure. So, but nevertheless, though, you, you made some great points, um, and I just wanted to get some feedback, uh, from all of you, but most importantly, the testimony, because it's good to hear, uh, from your perspective, what do we need to be doing better, um, as a city to be supportive? And, and I think one thing that came across is definitely, um, making sure there's things available for young people to get involved in consistently, but also, um, those who do represent government, and, and those who are adults that do participate, and not only in politics, but just in, in, in their day-to-day lives in terms of interacting with the community, like, do what you say you're going to do, be about it, what you're saying, and, and don't just come around during election time.
Right.
Okay. All right, anything else before we call up the next panel? All right, thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Next panel is Jahim Morel, Andy Matthews, Kadir Lady, and Yasir Lady. Pull the microphone to, close to you and identify yourself before you begin speaking.
Kader Lady?
Andy Matthews.
You can start.
I come here to talk about the violence that's going on in the streets, and it's, it's a lot of people dying out here, and it's black, like, not, not to be racist or anything, but like, it's a lot of black people dying out here left and right. And, like, the community I am, like, I'm in is, is like a dance group, and-
It's like, hey, say it again?
It's a dance group, like-
One more time?
A dance group?
A dance group?
Yes.
Do me a favor, put the microphone up, like, bring the microphone closer to you. Yeah, that's much better.
All right.
What's the name of your dance group?
Bomb Squad.
Bomb Squad, dance group?
Yes.
Okay.
And like, going around them, like, it keeps me off the street. Like, I feel much safer going around them, like, because sometimes I be feeling like, is it, like, am I going to be next? And I don't like that feeling, but like, when I go around Bomb Squad, I feel way safer. Like, I, I just feel much better being around people that do the same thing I do.
Okay. So, the, so the dance group keeps you out of troubles, what you're saying?
Yes, and, and I think like, we need like exposure and publicity, so like, people can come in and, and be with us, involved with us, like, and have the same attitude we have in, because now, nowadays, everybody want to be into drugs and guns, they think that's the trend.
Okay.
It, it is so much things on my mind when I think about violence, like, why, why should a parent have to bury their child at a young age? That hurts. Like, then people, they just don't care, they just shooting anybody, and they don't have like no type of remorse or mercy for anybody. And I just think like, why, like, why do they do it?
Let me ask you this, in terms of participating inside your dance group, so how are you accepted by your peers that's not in the dance group? When you're coming home, when you're leaving, and a guy's standing on a corner and getting involved in, in whatever, but you involving your dance group? Does that, does that has an impact in how they treat you?
Well, sometimes. I, I just try to stay away, because like, being in the mix leads to so much negative things. Like, I go home, lay down, go to practice, I just try to stay out the way.
Okay. All right.
Well, I'm the creator of Bomb Squad. I made it two years ago. It was to get, it was to help my other friends get off the street, because nowadays, like, rappers, they, they, they put out there that selling drugs and getting money, or you get money from selling drugs, that's not the only way. Like, the Bomb and Bomb Squad stands for building on my brother's back, and like, we create other businesses for other young kids, and like, what we need is like funding, so we can help put it out there more. Like, if more people know about what we doing, more people be active, it would be less moms crying. I lost my friend Saleem to gun violence. It was November 1st, uh, last year, 2015, and yeah, and I felt this though, if he was in my, if he was around people of my caliber, he would want to be in Bomb Squad, uh, do stuff that Bomb Squad do, he would have never got killed, he would have never been exposed to drugs, he would have never been exposed to none of that, he would have still been living today.
So, let me ask you this, so you created Bomb Squad on your own?
Yes.
And the purpose of you creating Bomb Squad was to get-
Get youth off the streets.
Off the streets.
And to do more activities, such as dancing, rapping, singing.
Okay.
Yeah.
How many people are in your group?
Well, from over the years, it was over 200 kids, but right now it's 20, because like, right now, so far, that, the bad side is winning, and kids, they see dancing as not being cool no more. They see being on the street as being cool, so, yes.
Okay. Young man?
Uh, my name is Yasir, Yasir Lady. Uh, I'm a member of part of, uh, Bomb Squad Dance Group. I don't dance, but I help, I help the kids, like, like, be more active-
Put the microphone to, go ahead, there you go.
Help the kids be more active inside the community. I play basketball, uh, what we want to do is like start a, we need funding to start a, uh, Bomb Squad Basketball Team, so, kids, like, like, other kids around the community can get off the, uh, streets, and we just need like, like money and stuff to start the, uh, basketball leagues and stuff.
Okay. What's your role with the group, with the Bomb Squad group?
Uh, this is my brother right here.
That's your brother?
Yeah.
Okay, you holding your big brother down?
Uh-huh.
All right, that works. Young man?
My name is Jahim Morel. Uh, I came to Bomb Squad to stop getting off the streets from people standing on the corner and selling drugs and stuff. I, I want to stop seeing that, and then I saw Bomb Squad on Instagram, and then I called Kader so I could join and stuff, so I could do more activities and having fun.
Kader, what other activities that, does the Bomb Squad do also besides dancing?
Uh, besides dancing, Bomb Squad walks through neighborhoods with a casket to show other kids that at the end of the day, if y'all keep continuing to sell drugs, shoot guns, this is what happens. And once they see the reality of the casket, we hope to like, stop them, for them to see what's going to happen, so they stop everything they doing and join our community. And we pass out flyers for, like, "I Want to Live," sometimes on 16th and Lehigh, because we didn't get a building, we had to make a building into a center, a, a community center. Like, we made that from scratch, and we have a second one coming soon, on 8th and York. We just trying to branch out in Philadelphia.
Excuse me one second.
our community center for all the kids around Philadelphia, and we just recently started building the new one on 8th and York, like, around there. What we want, what we plan to do is branch out to all neighborhoods in North Philly, and, not just North Philly, but all over Philadelphia. So, if some kids can't reach the one down our way, they'll be able to reach the other center around their way.
Do y'all engage in competitions?
Yes, uh, dance competitions held sometimes, like, every, like, every Friday, like, tonight we have a, a party for kids to come out and enjoy themselves, it's going to be performance, food, drinks, just stuff to get the kids off the street.
On Friday night?
Yes, Friday nights.
Okay. Where y'all located primarily, North Philadelphia?
Yeah, 16th and Lehigh, 1554 West Oakdale Street.
Okay. All right. Anybody, you, you guys who would like to comment? All right, one, I want to thank y'all for coming out and providing your testimony, but also giving me an overview of, of your program. You got any information on your program as well? You got it, your squad, your team? All right. And you got Mr. Terry with y'all, so a good guy making sure y'all looked out for in the city, but keep up the good work, all right?
Yes.
I think it's commendable that y'all do work as well on, on, on Friday evenings, because I know at the end of the day, on Fridays, that's when young people get involved in a lot of-
Yeah, that, that's what we get, like, a lot of publicity.
Things that are negative, you know? And, and I think it's also commendable that somebody mentioned in the middle of your testimony that the other side is winning, right? And y'all standing on the front line trying to do something that's positive while you got negativity going on all around you, and then when you also get the message saying, selling drugs is cool, shooting up the neighborhood is cool, and you're not separating that that's music and this is reality, and that's what you competing against, but I heard very clearly, you know, from the panel saying, "No, that's not what we into, this what we focus on." But at the same time, we fighting the up, uphill battle to, to, to do the things we need to do, because obviously, you want to support, extend, expand, um, your program to get more young people involved in something that's positive, and you can't do that without the necessary support. So, I respect what y'all, um, talked about during your presentation, and thank y'all for coming out as well, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next panel is Kalia Pasha, Maryam Mohammed, Anastasia Tisdale, Danae Rice, Brianna Massey, Malia Mackey, Nahia Williams, and Claudia Jimenez.
Hi, I am Anastasia Tisdale. This is Danae Rice, oh, Maryam Mohammed, Nahia Williams, Claudia Jimenez, Brianna Massey, and Malia Mackey.
Yes, when you, when you speak, all right, each one of you want to, and this is for the clerk, each one is going to have to state your name, first and last name, into the microphone, one at a time. So, we're going to start with you.
Oh, I am Anastasia Tisdale.
I need you to bring that mic up, mic. That's okay.
I'm Anastasia Tisdale. My name is Danae Rice.
Now, y'all know y'all loud later on when y'all get back, or it's cool, sorry.
My name is Maryam Mohammed.
I'm Nahia Williams.
Okay, your name is?
Maryam Mohammed.
Danae Rice.
Okay, you can begin.
Oh, this our presentation called "Home Away From the Streets." We decided to pick this song because, well, the Philly-known artist in the video, Rakim Allen, also known as PNB Rock, he basically saying that the city of Philadelphia needs help in what the crime and the violence has going on in Philly.
Okay, we want to create a year-round program, not to only keep teens off the street, but help them educate in things they are interested in. Teens don't have anything to occupy them, which results in crime, violence, and pregnancies. Our vision is to create a year-round program for low-income people, and the cost is just $15 a month.
$15 a month?
For the summer, my bad, I'm sorry.
For the summer? Okay.
Um, as you see over here, we found statistics in, um, South Philadelphia, and the population in South Philly is around about 40,000, and out of those 40,000 people, 12.8% of it is unemployment rate. Um, 40.5% are high school graduates, and only 18% have been graduated from college. We found that the violent crimes, the number is 83, two of them being rapes, 46 assaults, and 35 robberies. Um, the property crimes has been 267, um, 34 auto, 194 thefts, and 39 burglary. Nine out of 10 shooting victims are African-American 18-year-olds, so what we're trying to do is increase the high school educate, education, um, numbers and decrease the violent crimes.
And this picture-
Sure.
And this picture shows the homicide density in the city of Philadelphia. We live in the area around 17 where the deaths are 100 deaths and up. Philadelphia can be very dangerous if teenagers aren't busy academically or having a good time, so we believe that this program will lower that death rate in Philadelphia, South Philly.
State your name for the record.
Malia Mackey. I need the glasses. The service we have is unemployment center, and unemployment center, we will help kids do application assessments and internships and interview assistance. A credit center, we, we help students regain their credits, we help out, we help dropout prevention and overage, um, like, help them get their credit, people who dropped out of high school. Free driver's ed class, we going to prepare the students to get their license. Occasionally, community fundraisers, we'll raise money for the programs and raise money for the less fortunate. Summer teen trade classes, including cosmetology, business Microsoft Office, communication studies, and fashion design. Entertainment center, game room, Wi-Fi and charging, and snack bar. Autumn Reed Community Basketball Camp, and Victory Row, including group sessions on pregnancy, rape, and, um, unsupported things that teen needs help with.
Good. State your name for the record.
Brianna Massey. Um, we want to create employment center, and we want to help teens with application assistance, internships, resumes, how to talk to people, and how to set them up with jobs and, um, internships. Around the area of South Philly, of South Philadelphia, it's about 13% of people that's unemployed. Out of the, out of the 40,000 people that's around there, approximately 5,000 people are unemployed. So, basically, what we're trying to do is lower that number of unemployment and help people with more jobs. A program that we want to, um, partnership with is called Youth Opportunities Unlimited, and basically, they're trying to do the same thing we're trying to do, support, um, teens 14 to 18 with summer jobs with nonprofit, public, and private employers. We want, um, our services to include resume writing, interview assistance, application assistance, internships, and summer jobs, um, summer jobs, part-time jobs, and full-time jobs.
We also decided to create a Autumn Reed Community Basketball Camp. As you can see, we have our boys and girls, Autumn Reed Rocket, um, basketball teams. We feel though this would be a good way to keep teens out of trouble, teens, boys and girls out of trouble, and, you know, sports keep many people, many teenagers busy, and also be a fun way to, for kids to stay healthy and active throughout the summer.
Community fundraisers, basically, the title self-explanatory, we want to raise money for the program and the communities. Some things we want to give back to is our community, don't you see all these people, the homeless people in Graves Ferry, we want to help them out, we want to, um, give money back to our program and just give out food for homeless people. Some things we want to do is theme recreational dances, we wanted to have 50/50 raffles, car washes, pretzels, candy, water ice stands, we want to have, um, cookouts with special guests. As a person, you saw a singer, um, PNB Rock, he's actually fully, we wanted him to come out for one of them, we want to do food drives, fashion show, like, um, Autumn Reed, we're actually having a fashion show, we want to do one in the summer to raise money for the program and other things right here, and we want to have recreational basketball and football games to raise- to raise money and different stuff to raise money.
Okay.
My name is Kalia Pasha, um, this slide is cosmetology, we wanna um do cosmetology because us girls like having their hair and their nose done, so we want to partner with Empire to help us teach um us how to do our hair and do our nose, and when girls have their hair and their nose done, they don't feel as stressed and they don't feel like they feel beautiful about theyself because, and then it's gonna decrease the, I mean, the bullying, because when you, when somebody don't got their hair done, they get bullied about they look a mess, so that's one reason, and we want to help like people that has, go to like the um hospital, help people that has cancer and lupus, to help them feel good about theyself, and we wanna, since we learned how to do hair, we wanna um help the young women have a free day to come there and get their hair done for the first day at school, and then we want to have um the same people that did their hair for the first day at school, we want them to come and do their hair for prom, for the seniors, and do their makeup.
Um, our vision is to build uh like free drivers ed classes for low-income families, and two hundred forty-three thousand were treated in emergency departments, motor vehicles are the number one um cause of death for adolescents, so um two thousand teens in the United States ages sixteen and nineteen were killed, most driving schools caused way too much for families, so we're trying to build this um portion of the program for families of low income, we found um the A A A Foundation for Traffic Safety, uh we found that teens who take drivers ed um involved in four point three fewer crashes, so this is going to make the community a safer place, because a lot of teens are rushing to drive and really want to drive, want to drive for prom and stuff, but they wasn't taught right or something, so this is why we want to build this um student driver education, you could receive up to a ten percent insurance discount by taking this class, and it makes drivers feel more confident and responsible.
Credit, who came up with that one?
All of us.
All y'all.
Um, we would like to create a credit center, because this service, because many people cannot graduate because they don't have enough credits, with this program, we can help people get their diploma instead of having to get a G D.
Oh, credit recovery.
Credit recovery.
Okay, got you.
And the fee is thirty dollars for this, for people that dropped out, like adults that dropped out and they want to come back to regain their credits instead of getting a G D.
That's what's up.
No.
No, okay.
I do, I gotta say my name again?
No, not at all, if you spoke to everybody, you don't have to say your name again.
Um, this program is called Victory Road, the national rate-related pregnancy rate is five point zero percent per rate, in twenty fourteen, a total of two hundred and forty-nine thousand seventy-eight babies were born to ages fifteen and nineteen years old, I'm gonna repeat that number, two hundred and forty-nine thousand seventy-eight babies were born to women ages fifteen and to nineteen years old, for a birth rate of twenty-four point two per one thousand women in that age group, we want to, this service to support and help teens that are pregnant or have a child so they can know that they are not alone, we want them to feel comfortable and open, and we want them, the counselors to help them with their depression, anxiety, and any other disorders that they may have.
Hi, my name is Claudia Jimenez, I'm sixteen years old, as you can see the little, the little beautiful little girl in this video is my daughter, her name is Jalen, and she has one going on two this year on August fifteenth, being a teen mom is hard, when I found out I was pregnant, I did not know how to tell my mom or who I was going to tell, I was too worried on what people was going to say or what they were going to say about me or what they was going to think about me, when I told them my age, I was fourteen when I found out I was pregnant, and I had my daughter August fifteenth, then I turned fifteen August twenty-eighth, so our birthdays are not that far apart as you can see, but honestly, I would have never thought that I was going to be a teen mom, but things happened, she's the best thing that ever happened to me, all through being a teen mom is hard sometimes, I have a lot of support from my family and friends and other people, and so this is why we created the program Victory Road, this program will help a lot of teens that need help in any way, if someone has a program, it will have helped me out a lot, and relieve stress, if we get the chance to make this youth center happen, it will help me out by giving me the support and understanding that my family need not understand, I love my daughter to death, and there's nothing I wouldn't, I wouldn't do for her, I am going to finish school, get a job, get my own house, get myself together, then go to college for being a doctor, and also an interpreter, so I can make my daughter so proud of me, and so I can also give her the world, thank you for letting me share my story with you.
We all know everybody likes to have a good time, so we decided to have an entertainment center with a game room, a snack bar, and a wifi and charging place, in the game room, that's some of the choices, we're gonna have Xbox One, the Wii U, Playstation Four, a hockey table, and food sport table, and the snack bar, we want to link with Morgan, the Steakhouse, who's already interested in in our school, and we want to have.
Did you see Morgan Steaks?
Yeah.
They have vegetarian food, they have like vegan food?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we want to have nutritional groups to teach the students about healthy decisions and food, for the wifi and charging, um as you can see in the graph, teenagers are more likely to be on their phones than to do anything else, so that's the purpose for that.
Um, this is called Last Road, it's basically for the end of the program, at the end of the summer, we want to have, we want the kids to feel like they ain't just come just to learn, we want them to know, want them to feel like they having fun, so we want to have a silent party, and we want to have a trip to Donny Park or Six Flags, because they like to do fun stuff, so we want them to feel like they not just coming to learn, and we want them to feel like they got stuff to do, and the silent party is basically, you wear headphones, we had the, we had the program at our school, and it was fun, you wear headphones and it's three, it's like three or four DJs, and they play different types of music, and you only got the headphones, so when you walk in, you don't hear nobody talking, you just hear the music, you just hear the music, and you hear people dancing and having fun, and we like listening to music, so if we have this, they gonna more than likely come.
Thank you.
Um, to help our program get started, we want to find partnerships and sources throughout the Philadelphia, as you know that Philadelphia is the, one of the biggest health-related um, health-related companies, and it has a lot of sources throughout the whole world, resources throughout the whole world, um, some resources we found, and we're not done finding some yet, but some resources we found was Shirley Randomman, she's, she's worked at, she has a cosmetology museum, she can help us with.
Yes, West Philly, Fifty Second Street.
She can help us with the cosmetology part of our program, and we have Philadelphia Healthy Start, and they can talk with us about counseling with the mothers, help us with training, so we can actually like see it from their point of view.
We have University of Science Employment Internships, Glenn Ellis Connected to Keystone First Internships, Job Bank Jobs in the Arts and Culinary Employment Internships, Glenn Ellis, um host of Breakfast Brody, he can help us like get known, and like get people to like actually want to help us out to start this program.
Okay.
How we, how we would bring our program in, we want to set up a Google account, um we want to set up social media accounts like Twitter, Instagram, Facebook, to bring people around Philadelphia and to our program, and we also want to set flyers around the building of our school and the neighborhoods, and the reason why we picked social media accounts is because us teenagers like to be on social media, so if they see something trending on social.
Me too.
Yeah, well, we all like being on such a media, so if we, us teens see something trending, they gonna more than likely pay attention, be like, oh, I, I want to go there.
See, I ain't know that, I ain't going front, I'm like, I know what trending is, but I didn't know people like really, oh, that's trending, so, except when I watched Barbershop this last weekend, but that's a different story, but go ahead.
That's a good movie.
Go ahead.
So, that's the reason why we picked social media, these types of social media accounts.
Okay.
This is all project, Home Away From The Streets by Kalia Pasha, Brianna Massey, Nahaya Williams, Danae Rice, Anastasia Tisdale, Malia Mackey, Claudia Jimenez, and myself, Maryam Mohammed, thank you.
Good job. I'm going to weigh ya. I'm going to weigh ya, because I had questions the same way I asked the Bomb, say your name of your group again, the Bomb, Bomb Squad, I had questions as well for you guys, so, how long did it take to gather, to put together, together this presentation?
About a month.
About a month?
About a month.
About a month, first and foremost, first of all, it was well put together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's number one, two, I'm impressed you all did the research, the statistics, um, and I looked at how you want to focus on establishing partnerships to be supportive of bringing um your vision together, there was something that I wanted to give some additional clarity on, well, this pro, when you start your program, you want it to be, this would be primarily a Point Breeze in the Grace Ferry area surrounding your school?
We want to start to have it in like the Point Breeze area just to start it off, but as it goes on, we want to try to have it in different places in Philly.
Have you had a chance to meet the Bomb Squad dance team?
No.
I saw them on Instagram.
I didn't hear you say it again?
I saw them on Instagram.
Oh, you saw them on Instagram, the Bomb Squad, okay, because maybe y'all can collaborate, you know, maybe y'all do like a si, I don't, you know, maybe a silent party, or when PNB Rock come, they might can do the dancing as well to participate, but um, I definitely want to commend y'all for the vision and the presentation, and anywhere I can be supportive, I know Waleel called me to do a follow-up, but I just think that it's a, a vision such as this, that you can start now, that allow you to help your peers get involved in something that's positive, my program is called, is called Peace Not Guns, I started my program back in nineteen ninety-eight, uh, one of my cousins was murdered down in South Philly in child school, um, child schoolyard, so somebody shot him, murdered him, and that weekend I did my own rally, it was a Peace Not Guns rally, with like drill teams, I had people come out and do poetry, um, had different speakers come out, and then from there, I started going to schools, teaching young people conflict resolution, anger management, and anti-street education, then I started doing prayer vigils, and going into different funerals, speaking about the issue of youth gun violence, and it started with just the same thing, me, sitting down, writing up, writing my ideas, and then trying to start try, trying to find people that would support me, bring my vision into a reality, so I'm definitely impressed by the research, but most importantly, I want to encourage y'all to focus on, uh, what you are already going to do, is get all the support you can to make this a reality, so you can also get more young people involved in things that are positive, so, um, thank, any other que, have any questions, any other comments, concerns?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next panel is Aleah Kalin, Joseph Harris, and Khalil Simmons.
Just state your name for the record, and then you can start.
Joseph Harris.
My name is Aleah Taylor, but I go by the name of Aleah Kalin.
Khalil Simmons. Is there something in here?
I had no idea.
Good afternoon, my name is Joseph Harris, I represent the Young Chances Foundation in the Grace Ferry area, before I speak, I would like to introduce to you Ms. Aleah, she is a young hidden talent within our, with a great voice within our foundation and the community, today she will share her creative art.
Professional dancer, right?
Say that again?
Aren't you a professional dancer?
Oh, yes.
Yes, I came to your event before, okay.
Today she will.
Aren't you like the choreographer?
Oh, no, I'm a professional singer.
Professional singer, yeah, I knew it was one of y'all, go ahead.
Today she will share her creative art by singing the Black National Anthem.
Lift every voice and sing till earth and heaven ring, ring with the harmonies of liberty, let our rejoicing rise high as the listening skies, let it resound loud as the rolling sea, sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught us, sing a song full of the hope that the present has brought us, facing the rising sun of our new day begun, let us march on till victory is won.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having me here, first and foremost, it pleases me to see that this is a youth-only hearing, the last time I was given this platform to share my views, it was for all public, and I felt like my point wasn't fully acknowledged as it should have been, I spoke about whatever is I feel like our city had, has, and how we can improve these problems to shorten the gun violence in the city, a brief recap on what I spoke about, the last time I was here, I spoke about exposure, as you can see, she needs to be exposed, people need to see her talent, I also spoke about how there should be more, like, I don't, I didn't understand why recreation centers aren't the same no more, why the power centers are being closed, why aren't police being more involved in the community even in sensitive times that it is right now, the relationships between the police officers and the youth, or even the urban communities, is, is, is separating more and more each day, um, what else? Uh, wait, hold on, I'm gonna have to come back.
I got you, bro. Alright, once again, my name is Khalil Simmons, and uh, can you ask me a question? Just so I can have like a general.
Sure, Mr. Simmons.
Okay.
Well, thank you for being here today, Mr. Simmons.
Thank you.
Mr. Simmons, today we are having a hearing on youth gun violence here in the city of Philadelphia, and we would like for you to give us your ideas, your concerns, your solutions as how we as a city can address the issue of youth gun violence.
Okay, so the first thing that came to mind as far as a concern is uh, health-wise, like is uh, organic foods, like why is there no Trader Joe's in the city, it's only Trader Joe's outside of, of the community such as like suburban areas, and um, what else, we got uh, Chinese stores, Chinese food, first of all, it's not real chicken, and, and it's five dollars, it's cheap, so, it's just not, it's not what we need, it's not healthy for us, it's not meant for us to succeed and to prosper and to like be healthy human beings, it's not, I don't know, I just feel as though we don't get that, another reason, uh, as far as education, I feel as though in the educational system and the curriculum, it should be more so about how to manage money, or how to finance cars, or finance houses, or actually like things that matter in the real world, not about, not, it's just, she on the phone, my fault, but um, so we got the education, that's one thing, I feel as though adults need more like attentiveness to, to the youth as far as mentorship, because I feel as though if I had a mentor at the age of eight, my life, I would have made different decisions, I would have made more decisions to stay committed. I would have made more decisions to stay committed and focused on my future, instead of worrying about instant gratification and, and things that are just gonna help me tomorrow, or, or things that are just gonna help me fifteen minutes from now, and things like that, so. I know for sure, I want to be a motivational speaker. I was recently, I was stabbed twelve times February eighth, so I'm a victim of, um.
Of what year?
This year, February eighth, so like two months ago, three months ago, yeah, so. Uh, um, it was, it was my fault, I could take full responsibility for that, but as, as a result, it was me being prideful, like, um, like, as far as somebody stepping on somebody's shoes, or bumping somebody, something like that, like, everybody has attitudes in the city of Philadelphia, and I feel as though that's because of just the lack of opportunities, the lack of exposure. People don't know, like, I, amongst my frie- I'm the only one amongst my friends who goes to meetings like this, or, um, has no problem speaking out, I'm a part of, uh, nonprofit organizations, and, and I'm, I'm in different things, towards though I'm trying to impact my community, and when I talk about these things, when I speak about these things, I remember you asked, one of the young men that was up here, like, how do they, how do they treat you now as you being, have you removed yourself from everything else that they were doing, because I was once a part of everything too, so. I chose that, I saw it wasn't getting me anywhere, the results weren't what I wanted, I know I'm fully capable of obtaining more, and I feel as though I want more, I deserve more, so I went to go get more. And the people, they, it's not accepted for some reason, it's not looked at as like, that's the, that's the decent thing to do, it's looked at like frowned upon, being smart is frowned upon. Being, being like, um, knowing things, just not being ignorant, I feel as though ignorance is bliss, and once I came to the conclusion that I want to know more, I can't act like I don't know. So, I want to inform my people, and I feel like, as you being a man, as you being an adult, and, and everybody else being adults, they should want to lead people the right way, and, and, and just exposure, it's all about exposure, because my friends, they don't, they don't know things, they don't see things that I do. So, they don't really understand my viewpoints and my interpretations of how I perceive things, they don't understand why I move the way I move now, because they haven't, first of all, they haven't been through what I've been through, and a lot of people haven't. Like, me, I'm only seventeen, I graduated high school a year early, and as a result, I only, I've been out here for a year, I was working and stuff like that, but it's not too many opportunities for youth. And just exposure, man, as far as colleges, like, college is frowned upon too, because it's more, it's praised for you to be able to go to jail for four years or five years.
You get a party when you come home, too.
Exactly, exactly, you get a whole welcome committee. Not exactly, it's, it's more so like, oh, you went there, oh, you think you better now. Ultimately, from the gate, if I go to college and I come home, I think I'm better because I went to college. When you, you got the same opportunities I got, I mean, you could have did the same thing, but it's just the mindset, the mindset, I feel as though it needs to change, I'm not really sure how to impact people's minds. That's why I want to be a motivational speaker, so I can talk, because I like words and quotes and stuff like that, but it starts, it starts with perceptions, and once my perception changed about a lot of things, my whole world began to change as far as just opportunities. People wanting to help me, like, people actually want to see me succeed, and people actually do have faith in me, they actually do want to push me further, so I can reach my full potential and stuff like that, so. I believe that it's obtainable, and I want to let people know, I feel as though that word needs to be spread, and I'm a full firm believer in God, and I feel like everything happens for a reason. Time, timing is everything, so anything that I'm going through, anything that I've been through, anything that you might be going through, it could ultimately, is, is a blessing in disguise, is something's gonna-
You're doing a motivational piece on me right now, right? I had a rough week, you like, make, you know.
I'll be, I haven't, I didn't write anything down, so.
No, you're doing all right, though.
Um, so, we got the crime, crime in the streets, crime in the streets is ultimately because people don't have nothing else to do. This is what, this is what's, this is what it is, like, it's an achievement to shoot somebody nowadays, like, that's achievement in life. Like, I'm, uh, people talk about it like that's something to be proud of, like, something to brag about, like, you got bragging rights because you, you OD'd over some, some per- I mean, some syrup or or something like that, like, there's just the mindset, the mindset's gotta change, and I feel like it starts from school, because kids don't want to go to school. I wasn't going to school, my, I wasn't going to school. If I, I felt as though money became a priority, school wasn't really, wasn't helping me in the way that it should have been, so. I felt that way, because I really wasn't learning, I'm smart, what I gotta go to school for? Like, I know this stuff, I go to school, I do it, so I gotta be there to continuously learn it, so. We gotta, we gotta impact the minds, we gotta change the minds, the mindset of, I feel like it starts in the educational system, it should start at a young age, before we get into the system, because I didn't start receiving help until I got an advocate, once I got on probation. Now, I feel like we need to impact the community, and impact the children before that happens, show them that there's other ways, you know, this, it's like, um, it says, God's way is like, uh, it's like, it's like a narrow hallway. And all the other ways is like, like the violence and the negative stuff, it's like an open metal field, and everybody's choosing to do that, and nobody's really choosing to, to do what's right, I don't know, nobody knows what's right, everybody thinks what's right is like boring. It's not, I don't know, so that's all I gotta say. Joe, did, did I help?
Thank you, Mr. Simmons.
He helped though.
You ready?
Yes. I feel like there should be more exposure to these foundations, I feel like, I, I'm a part of the Young Chances Foundation, I'm a proud member of it. I don't, I feel like there should be more funds for the foundations that's really doing good out here, you know, we do community events, community cleanups, basketball events, Easter events, et cetera. I feel like that's, that's stuff for kids to look forward to, you know? There's not really much for kids to want to do, you know, there's not too many people out there to make kids feel like they want to do something positive. And I just want to ask you this, because like, I'm curious, I'm, I, I represent Young Chances down in South Philly, but I'm from the North Philly area, I just wanted to ask, um, like, why aren't there more council people here? I was just confused about that when I came in, because it's like, it's weird to me, I just wanted, I mean, I'm from North Philly, I want, I want to know.
That's legitimate, that's legitimate question.
Because I'm, I'm, I mean, my folks from down in South Philly, but I'm from North, I want to know, I want to make my community better.
Yes.
Because like, it's, it's sad, like, I'm sixteen out here, it's sad that I feel like I'm the only person that's in my neighborhood that's, that got a chance to make it out. That's hurtful, like, having people that's dead and in jail, and, and, and people that's like turning into junkies virtually, I'm saying, and when you doing good, people want to hate, because they can't really reach that potential, but you try to motivate them, but people don't want to hear that, they want to have the adults motivate them. So, I feel like the foundations, they're important, and I feel like the rec centers are important, like, get kids having hobbies, you know? Like you said, people just want to play the block now. I like, like a son, like, people basically sitting outside just waiting to get shot at, that's not cool. Like, it's either you want to block, or, I mean, I'd rather you talk to a girl on the phone, laying in bed, or something like that, like, do something.
Say it again, I think I misheard you say-
I'd rather you live on the phone with a girl than like be outside.
You'd rather be home on the phone with the girl?
I'd rather be on the phone with a girl, like.
Okay, I respect that.
Priorities is messed up, man, like, we try, kids out here trying to post up with a gun and stuff like that, like, they trying to be, they trying to be the boy, like, trying to get a name out here. You understand, like, that's not cool, you should want to-
You know what, I'm, I'm gonna put that challenge on everyone that's here, so how do you push back on changing that culture? Because Mr. Simmons talked about something that, that, that's, that's important, like, it's frowned upon to go to school, but it's cool to carry a gun, and how do you shift that dynamic? Because at some point in time, like, we in city government, we can do our part, but there's also a part in terms of what's accepted and what's not accepted that we have to address as well, like, what's your perspective on that in terms of y'all generation?
It gotta be more all his, that's from, that could play both sides. That could come back, that got their degrees and all that, that could come out and hope, that never left, that always stayed true to who they was, but they, they went to school and knew that it's two different lanes, and they stayed in their own lane and made a better way for themselves. You know, if they come back, and they, they like an image for, for the youth to look at, and look up to that person, and that makes sense.
So, let me ask you this by a show of hands, how many of you know people that live in your neighborhoods that want to go to college and still live in your neighborhood now?
It's not too many.
We got like four.
Only motivation from a black man I got is my grandpop and my uncle. They my father figures, because my father did, so like, that's all I got. Uh, and I see that they successful, they make me want to go to college, they make me want to have a masters, they make me want to, you know, open my horizon in certain things, you know? Stuff like that.
Okay.
You want to say anything, so, we don't, we taking over.
Yeah, that's a young lady, go ahead.
I think we do need to reach out to the parents, though.
Parents?
Yes, because like you said about gun violence.
Why you say parents?
Because a lot of parents aren't very involved in their children. So, when we talk about programs, and we need to get our children in more programs, we need to address this to the adults. Because if they don't know, then they're not going to think that their children should go. So, if we say, oh, you should take your child to this program, okay, I'll look into that, you know, so it's just a matter of talking to the adults before the children, not saying the children can't do it on their own, but the adults do have more power. So, um, yeah, that's all I have to say, so, parents, I just think everyone needs to be involved in their child's life, because you don't know what's going on if you're not involved, so. Like you said, when, you know, it's a trend to have guns and to post up on the corner and stuff like that. If you are involved in your child's life, they would not be doing this and be doing that. Go to a program, learn about business, learn about, um, what you want to do, your occupation in life, and your career, so, that's, that's just what I think.
Okay.
Can you, can you repeat yourself the question, please?
I was talking about how do you shift the culture that says carrying a gun is cool, and if you go to school, you're a fool.
Hmm.
Because that's normally what's going on, a lot of time, we celebrate, like you, you mentioned earlier, shooting somebody, carrying a gun is a, you shoot somebody, that's an achievement.
Right, so.
When it's really not an achievement, because it's only either jail or-
I feel like there, there's a parallel.
Graveyard.
There's a parallel between the two worlds, we got the, we got the streets, and we got the corrupted America. There's a parallel in between the two, and you got to find your, your niche, you got to find a way to, to, to stay in the middle, it's a balance, like, you got to balance the two. Because I, I can, you have to like, it's, it's a versatility thing, you got to be diverse, you got to be diverse, and in order to do that, you have to have somebody that's, that's as an technically an authority figure, say so, in the community that people look up to, or people that, that, they just respect his opinion, or his or her opinion, towards though he can be an example, or, and just be respected, because if he, if he, I'm, I know I was, I don't know, I've been in the streets for a while, but I can also hold my own in the streets, and I can have an intellectual conversation with a man that's important. So, that, those things can take me a far away, because I can take what I learned, everything is one, I believe everything is one, so. My ideas, my, the stuff, how I move in the streets, I just take the same things and put it into the, the real world, the world that we actually live in, reality. But some people's realities may be when they see and go outside in the morning, that, there should be no reason why, I tell a girl good morning, and she look at me, give me the, yeah, like, like, why you so mad, like, what's wrong?
I had no comment.
It's early in the morning, but that, that comes from of, of whatever happened in the home, or maybe she had a bad morning before she even left the house, or stuff that she sees in the morning.
But let me push you on this before I wrap up for the next panel, but what specifics, what's the specifics, like, what can actually be done? I feel you about being versatile, I feel about being from the streets and taking what you know in the streets and doing something positive, I feel that. Um, but I, I want to also continue to push y'all on some concrete ways that, uh, we shift, again, that mentality. Because a lot of it, again, um, I, and I, and I, and I agree that in some cases, one authority figure may be the individual that people may look up to and say, wow, if this person is operating that way, then, and it's positive, and that might be something that can be accepted. I also look at it as, as young people, as a whole, y'all have influence on each other.
Yeah, for sure.
Same way there's negative peer pressure, right, there's positive peer pressure. Like, when a guy bring the gun, um, to school, right, and everybody say, well, can you put this up in your locker? But if you saying like, no, we ain't into that, that's, no, we ain't doing that, then that one person, right, becomes the mon- that person becomes the minority, because everybody else, they ain't really feeling what that person is doing, and then what happens is, then they become off to the side, where everybody else is like, in a positive lane, doing something that's positive, that's just another way to kind of look at it, because eventually, um, it has to be a cultural shift on what's accepted, and what we think is cool, and what we think is not cool.
So, it starts with you, it starts with me, and all the other leaders. It has, it starts with the leaders, like, we all got to come together, like you said, you got your little program, your program got to link up with the, with the Bomb Squad.
Bomb Squad.
Yeah, you feel me, you got the, you got the Bomb Squad with the, with the other young ladies over there, like, everybody got to come together, we got to kill, like, keep these ideas in a circle, and we got to branch out, once we get everybody together, so we, I'm, I'm a leader wherever I go, so. I, I have influence, I have charisma, so I can, I can do that. You can do the same thing, my man, Joe can do the same thing, we, we all got to do it to where as though we get people together and come collectively with the same ideas, and come to one point and one conclusion, so we can teamwork, make the dream work, baby, you already know.
My man, well, listen, I want to give, thank all of you, thank you for coming out, doing your testimony, Young Chances, thank you very much. Thank you, let's give them a round of applause, y'all.
Okay, right, come on, man.
Teamwork make the dream work. Can we please call the next panel, please?
Next panel is Kwahi Kennedy, Samantha Jones, and Jameer Kennedy.
Warren Reed, y'all leaving? Good job, I'll follow with Mr. Wally, okay? State your name for the record, and then you can start your testimony.
My name is Kwahi Kennedy.
My name is John Murray Kennedy.
My name's Samantha Jones.
You can begin, Mr. Kennedy, that's your little brother?
Little cousin.
Little cousin, okay.
A problem I see with youth gun violence is, uh, basically just poverty and the everyday struggle of low income. I, from my personal experience, I can say this, and I think I speak for majority of black young men in the community, uh, when people commit, uh, acts of gun violence, it usually isn't even a hate crime, it, it really stems from having a little sister that's hungry or some, something like that. Like, uh, I think we could change that by upping, like, upping minimum wage two dollars, right? Food drives and simple stuff like that.
Okay. So, you said poverty plays a major role?
Yeah.
My perspective is like the media, uh, bands though that the media is social, so everybody is on it. And bands though that everybody's on it, people be bullying people on the social media, they say, I'm gonna kill you, I'm gonna kill you that, and-
On social media?
Yeah, on social media, like, it'd be a-
Social media bullying?
Yeah, and like, they have an argument, argument break out into a, like, me saying-
Real gun play?
Yeah.
Over social media, correct?
Yeah, they say, I ain't with that fight, and I play with guns and all that, so. And that, and that's a big way of gun violence right there.
Through social media?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to piggyback off the social media thing real quick, um, I feel as though we glorify the wrong people and put them on the front scene, uh, like, for example, we have artists, rappers and stuff, Chief Keef, Chicago rappers, that get paid millions of dollars to talk about killing people. We, we, like, it's, it's all about trends, we gonna see, we gonna, we gonna follow what we hear and what we like.
So, you said entertainment industry?
Yeah.
Okay. Isn't there any positive rappers out there anymore?
Yeah, they're a minor, they're a minority, though, get overlooked.
See their minorities?
Yeah.
You ever heard of Chill Moody?
No.
No.
Okay, from Philadelphia, Philadelphia rapper, positive.
All right, y'all want me to say that? All right, um, I think the prob- can you hear me? All right, Kim?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
I think the problem is, I mean, well, it starts at home, basically, because, um, a lot of, a lot of children out here don't have their stable and support system that everybody has at home, people, um, like he was saying, social media is a big problem, because I mean, it starts in school, because if you don't have, like, say, if you don't have like the fresh kicks or something like that, you could get bullied over there, you could just get bullied simply because you don't look like another person, and they think they better than you. And they'll put it up, they'll wind up putting on social media, like Twitter or Instagram, then they'll start trending, and it become worse, and like, they don't have that mentor or somebody to go home to, I, I think like we should, I think it should become like a mentor program for children out here, because is, that support system is not home, and they don't know like where to get it from. Because schools, schools don't really have, you really don't, wouldn't want to go to school and try to like get a support system, because it's really not, they don't really help you. Or like, you don't really feel comfortable going there and telling them about like what's happening, like, that's why they go to guns and this and that and whatnot, and they just try to think they tough or whatever, because, you know. tough or whatever because, you know, but they.
Wow. Okay. So, wh- what do you think we could be doing more as a city to be supportive of young people? Specifically as it relates to the issue of youth gun violence? Let me go back on one part. So, I know what trending is, right? But I think from this hearing, it, it gave me a different perspective in terms of how young people deal with trending. So, let's go back. Somebody can disrespect somebody on social media, post it, right? Hashtag whatever the disrespect is and then other people start following it and, and the disrespectful quote, I mean, post will actually be a trending topic?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay. That's interesting. Okay. So, what do you think the city could be doing also better to, to be supportive of young people as well?
Just like, keep their kids active, like, just keep them doing something. Like, just, like, every day at the school, have a, at the, at the school program or somewhere for them to go besides the streets.
Anything else?
Um, they could, like, we could start doing, like, asking them what they want, like, if you in a classroom or something, the teachers, they don't really ask the children their opinion. They don't ask, like, what topics they wanna do, like, what topics they interested in. That's why I think some students get frustrated because I get frustrated sometimes because I feel as though, like, I'm, I know I'm a student and you the teacher, but like, I wanna state my opinions and get reactions on it and like, just go out and do stuff and make changes, but they don't, they don't be wanting to listen to that. They just think they always right.
Hmm, that's interesting. Okay. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for your testimony today. Will the clerk please call the next panel, please?
Next panel is Manaya Thompson, Thomas, Malaysia Peel, and Jada Morrison.
Please state your name for the record and begin with your testimony.
Okay. My name is Jada Morrison. Um, this is my testimony. Gun violence has had a negative.
You have to speak into the microphone, Ms. Morrison?
Gun violence has had a negative impact on my life since my teenage years started. I've always lived in the grittiest parts of North Philly and been exposed to gun violence. I've lost friends, family, and young men that were like family to me, all because a gun was out into the wrong hands. My uncle was taken away from my family in nineteen ninety-seven while I was still in my mother's womb. When they took my uncle away from my family, they took my family's only source of protection. My family members told me that my uncle was at the wrong place at the wrong time. Till this day, I never understood that phrase, for all we have is time. I don't feel safe in my own neighborhood and that's not a good feeling. I worry about my friend's safety whenever we go out for fun and it just shouldn't be that way. It's coming to a point where it's out of hand and too many lives are being lost. I deserve to feel secure in my own neighborhood and not have to worry about losing a loved one. I know my city has potential to be a safe and loving place. Why else would we call the city of brotherly love and sisterly affection? There are numerous amounts of things we can do to prevent gun violence. Here are a few of my suggestions. One, create more recreation centers that will serve as a safe haven to youth. Two, create more school programs that young people and teenagers will be interested in. Three, position more officers in the most violent parts of North Philadelphia.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Malaysia Peel and here's my testimony. When I was younger, I thought the world was perfect and safe for me. In my eyes, no one could do no harm. Growing up, seeing that is the complete opposite, it devastates me. It kills me inside when I turn on the news and someone has been shot down, Mount Airy or West Philly. I think about the families who thought their child was safe, just walking out the house that day. Gun violence hit home for me and I really wish it didn't. My uncle was killed growing up, before I was born, but it still has affected me because I've lost a great man who was supposed to be in my life. I often wonder what type of uncle would he be? Overprotective, understanding, or silly? I could only wonder and imagine now because he was taken away from me. It isn't fair, but everything happens for a reason, right? My youngest sister is innocent to the tough world she doesn't, she didn't deserve for a man, a grown man, to ever raise a gun in her face. What could a little girl do to you for you to have the audacity to harm her? We're losing our generation to gun violence. People are scared, so what could they do? Run from the guns or join the guns and people fear them so they are safe. Our community needs to get better. We need to build our youth and show them the right path. We need more recreation centers, after school programs, and mentors. And young child shouldn't have to face these tough streets. We are supposed to protect them and keep them safe, guide them when they are going down the wrong path and console them when they are lost. The youth looks up to us and we are letting them down by letting them see violence. We are supposed to love our neighbor and not kill them.
Thank you.
Jesus Christ.
You're absolutely seeing how it directly affects our, our children.
My name is Manaya Thompson.
Put, put the microphone over to, pull the microphone up to you. Take your time.
Yeah, take your time. Take a minute, want some water? No, thank you. Um, I was nine years old. My father was killed.
Let me read it for you, man.
Um, Manaya is upset, so I'm gonna read her testimony for her.
Okay.
Why me? Was my first response after hearing the news that would greatly impact my life for as long as I live. I'll never forget, it was the twenty-seventh of July in the year two thousand and ten when I received the news of my dad's passing. It was the most bitter feeling ever. Everything I had a passion for and loved, I hated. All the foods that I loved and enjoyed were nasty and bitter. All the people I loved to hang around became distant. It was a beautiful day when I woke up and saw a fluffy huge bed and got dressed. I checked for my family and they were not in my aunt's house. As I walked across narrow choir street to go to my grandma's house, I expected for my family to be there playing the golden yellow cheese eggs, fresh wavy bacon, and the perfectly fluff butter brown biscuits on the wooden table in the dining room. Instead, I saw pale discouraged faces, which made me feel awkward and scared. I ran to my mother, who looked like she tried not to cry as she told me the news, but behind her beautiful round face, I knew that there were millions of tears that wanted to fall down from my eyes. Her voice trembled as she said, "Manaya, your dad passed away this morning." I sat in disbelief for a moment. A few more minutes went by and I immediately dropped to my knees. When she saw me fall to my knees and began to cry, she could no longer hold it in and join me. A few minutes later, the whole family came into the house, was filled with sorrow. I cried all day long. My heart felt as if someone took it out my body and constantly stabbed me in it and tried to give it back to me as I neglected it. What made it even worse was that I found out he'd been killed. I wanted revenge. I did not eat or communicate with anyone for about a week. After the, that week, I enjoyed the Every Murder is Real healing organization, along with my family, which helped us out tremendously. It most importantly helped me out with my anxiety and allowing me to learn that when something devastating happens, you have to look at the right side of the situation because God does everything for a reason. God did this so that I could tell my story to others and the effects that gun violence has on our community.
So, I just feel like a solution to this, like, organizations such as EMIR should be allowed to, you know, visit schools once or twice each year as well as, you know, cause at my school, I, I go to a public school and, like, every year we have, it's like a health organization, they come teach, te, um, you know, talk to us about how nutrition is good for us, this and that. And I feel like that is vital to us, as, um, students, but I feel like, um, this is more important. You know, we can learn about that in health class and people, you hear it on the news, nobody really pay attention to it, but it's serious and.
Take your time.
You know, reaching out to, um, you know, the younger audience, cause we're, we're the future, we're the one who's, who can control the statistics of, you know, the murders and stuff, so I feel like that's just important. And, you know, organizations should be coming, talking to schools like once or twice each year, stuff.
Okay. Any other comments, concerns? One, I wanna thank all three of you, is all of you talked about things that, um, had a personal impact on you as relates to, um, violence. And so, I do thank you, commend you for being strong and being here. And this particular perspective, though, probably is the first time I've heard about it, cause we do, um, some programs goes in schools to probably talk about, um, some of issues of youth gun violence, but they don't also talk, I don't think there's a, there's programs that focus on it from a perspective that if you've been a victim or related to someone or who have, um, been a victim of gun violence from that, from that aspect. So, that's different for me, um, and it's something I definitely, um, take into account. And you said it's probably more important than health cla, I mean, the health program coming inside the school, um, which is very, very, um, that was something that stuck out in terms of your testimony. But I do wanna thank all of you for coming out, um, getting up your ideas, your feedback, but most importantly, just being strong and sharing your story because it also, um, again, we see it every day, this is the work that we do, but it also brings it home as to why it's important that we make this, um, a number one priority. Cause you talk about being the future. Um, yep, all of you are. Every last person in this room, our city depend on you to become adults, our state does, as well as our country. That's why we have to continue to make sure it's a priority as it relates to any of the things on that we do.
One part I didn't see that was touched on.
Go into the mic and say your name.
Hello, how you doing? I'm Sister Talia Taylor from Sweet Soon Incorporated, also the vice chair of the Philadelphia Anti-Violence Coalition. Um, the one part that I didn't see people really touch on, I seen part of it was poverty, but it's like, a lot of people don't realize, a lot of the, the young kids, the young thugs, how many of those kids actually come from broken families such as DHS homes and the, the high percentage rate of the kids that normally had social services of some type, normally DHS in their homes, there are the same ones that wind up going to jail, that wind up going to juvenile facilities and wind up not becoming nothing with their lives. And it's, I think it's close to ninety percent of, of people that had, had previous social, social services in their, in their, in their lives, growing up, most of them go, uh, go down the wrong path.
Okay.
Even with, even with that, like, it's, it's a lot of broken families and broken homes. Like DHS, yes, they're way overworked, they're completely overworked, but the kids, the kids, even just from, from that, from that system, they don't get what they, what they need and they lash out. Then they go from group home to group home and then they finally wind up hitting the streets. And that's what creates a lot, especially our, our homeless youth, that's what creates a lot of the stuff that's out here on the streets.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Can I say, can I say?
Sure, you can. Yes.
I feel like we need to teach our young men that there is more power and knowledge and in books than it is in guns because young men often get the wrong idea that they're tough or they're stronger because they have a gun in their hand when really there's more knowledge in books. So, I feel as though if we reach out to our young men and our youth and we teach them where the real knowledge and the power is, that will solve a lot of the problems.
So, I'm gonna push this back on all of you since I have an all-female panel. So, most young men follow young ladies and they try to impress you. That's why we have kids, we go get the sneaks and the, and the clothes, cause we wanna go to school and be fly. And if y'all say we fly, we think we fly. And that's why I say all of you had a power to change that mentality that carrying a gun isn't cool. Like, you carry a gun, don't even try ask for my number, I'm cool. I'm not into that. You understand where I'm coming from? Cause it changes, um, when you talk about how what most young men perceive as being, not just young men, but young men and young ladies, what's accepted as being cool. And I think the more we focus on the things that are positive, like really being cool and the things that's negative, like, that's not cool and begin to conducting ourselves in that way, meaning, again, when that person bring the gun in the school and they need somebody locker to hold, you know, to put the lock, they put the gun up in the locker or when people are, before they going inside the school and everybody inside of the, at the corner store and you know they're about to go get high or do some type drugs. I think the more and more that our young people begin to say, listen, that's not what we into, we overhear, right? That's not what we consider as cool. I think you begin to shift that paradigm more and more. But also, it's clearly letting, particularly the young men know, when they doing the carrying the gun things, like, no, we not into that, that's not, that's not cool, that's not what accepted. You know, keep it moving, that's ratchet today. So, that's kinda my perspective, but, um, I hear you loud and clear, though, but you are definitely right. Um, yeah, being smart is more powerful than carrying a gun to take you further because carrying a gun is only gonna get you, it's guaranteed dead.
Or in jail.
Or jail. Or you get shot up and then you probably disabled. Like, it's guaranteed, those are the three things, nine times out of ten, if a person continues to live that life, lifestyle, it catch up with you sometime. I mean, people may say, well, you know, y'all older, y'all don't know. Yeah, we know, they've been shooting people for a long time, since I was young and probably before I got started, still the same type of thing. But I, I do have hope that, um, we can significantly, we, we do show youth gun violence, at least that's my personal mission, nothing more than anything else. Because at the end of the day, like, I have a son, my son is only one years old, so if I'm gonna stay inside this city, then I have to make sure the city is gonna be safe for him. But even beyond him, before he was born, I got nieces and nephews. And then you just get sick and tired of being sick and tired of seeing young people making poor decisions and choices and I'm always having to go to a funeral room to speak on behalf of some young person that was murdered. And a lot of it start social media or a petty argument. And so, we wanna work aggressively to figure out ways and we don't expect to have all the solutions, but that's why we have you here today, at least to hear from your perspective on, on how we need to be approaching things a little differently. But thank you for coming out today. You got something else? Go ahead.
Can I, um, we just wanna say our school and, uh, colleges that we going to.
Oh.
I'm from the Philadelphia High School for Girls and I'm going to.
One more time.
The Philadelphia High School for Girls and I'm going to Indiana University of Pennsylvania.
Okay, U P in the building. I went to Mansfield University.
I'm also from the Philadelphia High School for Girls and I'm going to Clark Atlanta University.
Clark Atlanta University, HBCU. Well, listen, I just wanna commend you and, 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 and continue being leaders, you know? When you make the decision on a Friday afternoon to come and participate in a hearing on youth gun violence, cause you don't have to, I don't think nobody said you have to go. If you don't go, you're in trouble. That's being a leader in itself because it starts with making a decision and a choice to do something that's positive. And for some people, that's not easy. Some people listen to what other people say, oh, you going down city hall? I'm not doing that, that's corny. I'm gonna go down to gallery, we gonna go shoplift or do whatever we gonna get into that's negative. So, I do commend y'all for being here and good luck with school as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, my, my, first of all, I wanna ask a question, cause I feel as though the problem is bigger than just like the city of Philadelphia, so, but I know a lot of people that are, are good at what they do. Ultimately, it's negative, but they're actually good at it, like, they, it's, it's like they're masterminds, like, they, they, if the way they use their brains, if they could take that and put it in something else, they are prospering in that too, same way they do in what do they do. So, ultimately, what kinda opportunities could you offer? Like, what, what, what could y'all do? Cause it's just, we don't do anything. We adapt to what we see, we adapt to what's around, so we become good at what we have access to. So, if we have more exact, access to other things that, that, that may expose us and open our minds to bigger and better things that I may be able to go to school and be a doctor or a lawyer and actually follow through and believe. I may be able to go to school and be a doctor or a lawyer and actually follow through and believe in myself that I can actually do it.
I think, I think al-, I think ultimately, and I'm gonna call the next panel too, but I think ultimately, for me, it's making sure that young people know what type of opportunities are out there for them to get involved in. Like, for instance, in my area, South Philadelphia, when I go to community, community meetings, people will say, well, there's nothing going on for our young people in the neighborhood. It's not true. You got Young Chances, you got Don't Shoot, you have Unity in the Community, you got the Sigma Sharks Football Team, you have, um, the Hurricanes Football Team, you have, um, Urban Youth Association Basketball Program that takes place in the wintertime in South Philadelphia. Uh, and so those are just like, off the top of my head, seven programs, right? But for me, it's always, how do you get that information out there for people to get involved in it? Because, um, if I don't know that it's going on, or I'm a parent, and I don't know that these programs that I just mentioned are going on, that I can't get my young people involved. I can't get my children involved. And every program I just mentioned, all of those are free, costs nothing. But how do you make sure that people actually have access and information to participate in those particular type of programs? So for me, it's more of getting the information out, but it may not be the same way in different parts of the city. But I do know, um, a big part of it is making sure that people have information, so they can come out and actually get involved. We can't do this because you kind of had your time on the panel, and I have another panel that's coming up, but I'll let you do a follow-up and close up, go ahead.
It's one city. You, you keep, like, we keep breaking it down, it's just different separate parts of the city, it's one city.
Well, the reason why I said particularly my area, because I can't speak, I don't know what's going on in the whole parts of the city. But however, what you're saying will definitely be duly noted, because what the hearing is gonna take back the information and focus on is the city as a whole.
Alright, say no more.
No problem, thank you. The next panel, please?
There, there are no further witnesses, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, okay, Mr. Simmons, you want to wrap up with anything else? Mr. Motivational Speaker. I'm getting ready to wrap, I'm getting ready to wrap up. And, um, and say my final remarks, but-
Yeah, my man, let's get it.
I, I do, you're part of Young Chances, right?
Yeah.
Alright, I'll do this, I'll do a sidebar with, with, with Tariq Glasgow, with the two of you, and then we'll figure out how we can continue moving the city of Philadelphia forward, is that alright?
That's cool.
Also make sure my recorder wraps up. Listen, I want to say this sincerely to every young person that came down here today, can we give all our young people a round of applause, please? You know, I always, um, share that when I see young people getting involved and thinking of the positive, um, you have to acknowledge it, because we always see the flip side. When you turn on Fox in the evening, when you turn on Channel Six, Ten, and Three, it's always a negative portrayal of young people getting involved in something that's negative. We never see, I mean, I don't think I see a camera here today, and we sent out releases, that's not what it's about, but at the end of the day, if you're gonna do something positive, and young people are gonna do something positive, it needs to be highlighted, 'cause other than that, it plays off of that stereotype that young people are, are out there getting involved in things that are just totally negative. So I sincerely, again, I appreciate the testimony, and we'll continue to keep you updated on how we continue to improve, um, the work that we're doing, specifically as it relates to youth gun violence here in this city of Philadelphia. I just want to thank you, and, uh, the hearing is now closed. Thank you very much. I want to also acknowledge, um, Councilman Curtis Jones, uh, he isn't here today, but he is the chair of this committee who allowed us to do a part two for this hearing, so thank you very much and take care. We're gonna recess this hearing to the cho-, to the call of the chair.